Good morning.
Good, good morning, Chair Querin O'Brien and Councillors for the record, Oliver Ojaka, and I will be the one having this surface mining overview discussion with council this morning. Next slide, please. So staff will start with a brief background as it relates to mining in Clark County and the role of Clark County. Then we will briefly go over the resource aggregate resource land inventory that was prepared by the State Department of Natural Resources that aggregate resource land for Clark County is not only unique to Clark County when that 2005 inventory was done, it was done or prepared for all the 39 counties in the entire state. So that I will go over with. And then I will share with council the 2012 map or the aggregate designation before the county undertook an amendment of the surface mining following that 2005 inventory map. Then I will go over the update that became effective or was completed in 2014. And then show the council by way of MABS, the current areas with surface mining overlay designation and then talked about amending of surface mining. And then we can talk about next steps. So next slides. So councillors, as I indicated, in the mid 1990s, Clark County adopted a surface mining overlay map and code standard as well as mineral land policies. Mining operations, which are all mine related activities except for reclamation, are regulated by local governments or states and federal agencies, and this is under RCWU 78.44. That RCWU 78.44091 makes local government to be responsible for approval of mine sites and the subsequent use of that mine site. So local governments must formally approve mine sites and the subsequent use of the mine site as well. Generally, that makes local government the lead agency for mine related activities as under the State Environmental Policy Act, and that is in chapter 43.2621C. And then the Department of Natural Resources is responsible for ensuring that reclamation follows completion of the mining and both surface mining and underground mining. So what that means is that DNR has exclusive authority to regulate mine reclaimations and approve reclamation plans. Under the GMA, which Clark County is fully planning on the counties that are fully planning under the Growth Management Act are required to identify, designate and protect mineral resource land that are not already characterized by urban growth and that have long-term significance for the extraction of mineral lands. And this is on the revised code of Washington 3670A170. It further requires that those lands should be classified on the basis of geologic, environmental and economic factors, including existing land uses and also land ownership. Next slides. So this is the, this map is very hard to see, but I didn't have any way of enlarging it, but I will go over that just by color and what it means. This is the rock aggregate resource inventory, a land inventory for Clark County. And this map was prepared in October of 2005 by the DNR Division of Geology and Earth Resources. They produce this aggregate resource inventory map for Clark County using, according to DNR, the best data available. How do you read this map? Resources were classified and mapped as identified, and I'll go through that quickly. Hypothetical and speculative. So if you look at the colors on the map and also on the legend in terms of explanation, the identified are the, what I may call the darker yellow and also the darker brown, if you will. Very difficult to see. And then the lighter brown are the hypothetical and the also lighter brown and also lighter yellow are your speculative. The further way to look at this map is the areas that they identified or classified as identified means where the distribution grade and quality could be confidently established based on specific geologic evidence, limited sampling and laboratory testing. That is the area that they're identifying as or showing up as identified. Hypothetical are where data appears to satisfy most, but not all, or whatever criteria that they were using. So that's how they classify some area as hypothetical. Areas that they classified as speculative are where geologic and production information is posed, where inferences can be made from existing geological mapping or data to suggest that there may be rock that might have potential, but again, they're classifying that as hypothetical. So when you look at this map, majority of the identified, you can find that are already within the city limits, if you will, particularly on the east side of I-205 and to some extent, not of I-205, what would be northeast. And then very small area in the central part of the, of the county. And the dark brown is also scattered northeast of the county and the light speculative are all on the east side of the county. So that's what this map represents. Next slides. This map shows what areas designated as with surface mining overlay in 2012, prior to the update that the county undertook. Now, I apologize, even our GIA staff also has issues trying to put road to help us really understand where these are. But you can see that predominantly these are again on the east side of the county and to some extent, not east part of the county in terms of areas designated with surface mining overlay in 2012. And very limited area in the city proper by the UGA is very little, as you can see on this map. Next slides. So when the Department of Natural Resources provided the county with the 2005 resource inventory map, the council or the commissioners at the time appointed a task force to use the 2005 information to update the surface mining overlay. Again, based on the aggregate resource inventory map developed by DNR. Part of that work included update to the comprehensive plan policies, update to the surface mining overlay map, and then update to Title 40. That all started in 2011 by the appointment of a mineral land tax force. And their charge was to develop recommendations for updating the surface mining overlay, both policies and standard on the aggregate resource mapping based on the aggregate resource map inventory. There are a couple of criteria that are also found in Washington Administrative Code 365-190070. What that requires is that counties must approach the effort in terms of the update as a county-wide or regional process. The county must also identify and classify mineral resource land from which the extraction of mineral occurs or can be anticipated, and the county must designate known mineral deposits so that access to mineral resources of long-term commercial significance is not knowingly precluded. When the council appoint or the commissioners appoint a rural surface mining advisory group, it took the group almost three years to complete the effort. And I believe councillor Querin, who was on the planning commission, will recall that it took almost four or five hearings, joint hearings between the council and the planning commission before a decision could be made on areas designated with surface mining. And if I may say so, because I was here then, part of that process was more on a negotiation between some property owners who didn't want to have their property be designated with resource mining and back and forth between some neighborhood organizations, folks that live in Livingston Mountain. So the next slide, if I may, go ahead Rebecca on next slide. Again, I apologize for the map. As we move forward, hopefully we can ask our GIA staff to put street and road so that we can get a clear understanding of where these are. As you can see on this map, this is the resultant of that update. And again, areas designated with surface mining are predominantly in the unincorporated portion of the county on the east side. And as you go further to what I may call the north east side of the county, north of battleground UGA, and then you can see some areas north of La Center and also northeast of Richfield, very little or no designation within the city limits. Next slides. Oh, before I come back to the last slide, Rebecca. Before I leave this slide, I must also say that because this was completed in 2014, the ordinance adopting this map went into effect in January of 2015. And this is the map that we've had since then. The last time we added a surface mining to this map was in 2018. And that was the Yakot Mountain. That was about 107 acres. And there is also currently an application that the council will hear. This is the Shalashi Bluff Application. That is 300 acres that staff is processing this year. So I will get to why the council and the county can do site-specific requests from property owners to go through the surface mining overlay, even though the code or the work requires that overview or review of surface mining be done on a regional or county-wide basis. So go to the next slide. So amending surface mining overlay, as I indicated, there's a provision in WAC as also and also in RCWU 3670A472. This provides, with the exception of looking at it regionally, these two sections of RCWU and WAC provides that property owners can initiate site-specific changes to the comp plan and zoning designation as it relates to surface mining. So that's why we review surface mining addition or removal if the site have been depleted through the annual review process. Next slides. In a site-specific request to expand or place a surface mining on any property, these are the five criterias that county staff will have to review and the council and the planning commission before we can recommend approval or denial. I'm not going to read all the five criterias. I believe the council is aware of this criteria. The first is has to be consistent with GMA and some of the works that I mentioned and comprehensive plan, county code, official population growth forecast, and then confirm with the appropriate locational criteria identifying the plan and then suitable for the proposed designation and a lack of appropriately designated alternative site in the vicinity. And then either a response to a substantial change in condition, better implements applicable comprehensive plan policies on current planned map designation or correct an obvious mapping error and then talks about number five, which in some cases doesn't really apply. Demonstrating that a full range of urban services, facilities or services can be adequately provided in an efficient and timely manner, including water, sewer drainage and so forth. Next slides. This is also additional criteria for reviewing surface mining. This is in Clark County Code Title 456010. Again, I'm not going to go into details, but you know, it says additional criteria for mining overlay changes. The county must designate or may designate additional areas with the surface mining overlay if the designation criteria in the comp plan have been met. The quantity and characteristics of the resource, including size, deposit and all of that, depth of overboarding and distance to market, cost of transportation and all of that suggests that mining is economically viable. And then it talks about at least 60% of the area within 1,000 of the proposed is characterized by parcels of five acres or larger. And this gets you, number two, gets you to when the county or the applicant can request that the surface mining overlay be removed. And then it goes into the criteria, the resource have been depleted and there is evidence that there is mining the site is no longer economically feasible and then C and D, so which is very clear. Next slides. I wanted to bring this policy to council attention. There is a policy in the comp plan, I think it's policy 3.6.6. It says here that surface mining overlay shall not be designated within rural zones except to allow for the expansion of an existing mining site. Technically, and the council will agree, what this means is that we cannot knowingly designate new surface mining on rural 5, rural 10 or rural 20. This is the county policy. Next slides.
Oliver, that's county policy?
Yes.
It's not, it's not a criteria that the state sends down?
No, but I think it is a county policy, given the issues about, yes, it is county policy, it's not state.
The reason I asked that, that kind of surprises me. I did not know that that was the policy. And because it's a county, it's a county policy. If the council should choose, it can change that policy as well. So just saying, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I think the reason I'm bringing it up is the county will agree or councillors will agree that you know, the county is growing and there are new homes being built in the rural area. So land use is all about impact. So yes, the county can change this policy if it so chooses.
And I would say, Oliver, I just want to follow up with that. Absolutely. My contention has always been that we need to, one of the reasons that we place these overlays and if they would be changed, we do them in advance of a lot of development that could take place. And, and so I, I think identifying, because if you, if you look at that policy, it seems to me that you know what, like 20 years ago, what if we didn't know what was there and we can't change that now? To me, it seems like that we have to be very careful, of course. And then, and then I think that we should not even allow some development within a certain amount area around that mine so that it does not disrupt, disrupt residences and neighborhoods that later will will be wanting to get rid of it. So I just, I just want to say that. I'm not, I'm not saying we should, you know, park it in the middle of an existing, you know, neighborhood or developments. So that said, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you councillor. And I think one of the other issues which is not part of this conversation is the standard and other rules that surround mining. One of the areas which I'm not going to get into is in, in the rural area, we are required anytime we are doing a map change or in this case, surface mining to notify rural residents within 500 feet. Some have argued that that 500 feet for mining is not adequate, but that's not what is before you. Just want to, this is part of the conversation about homes being built, which we cannot deny if, if there are application for subdivision and things like that. So next slide, oh, don't worry. This is the slide I want to focus on. So if we were to undertake review of the surface mining, it is a type four legislative process, and I think the council is aware of that. It has to go through the planning commission, work session, hearings and so forth, and then come back to the council for your own action. As I indicated earlier, the last time we were directed to take another look at the surface mining based on the information from DNR, that took two to three years and the council appointed a task force to folks that would, that have expertise and some neighborhood folks to work on that. So and then it required the super and public participation, like I said, planning commission, work session and hearing, and then coming back to the council for your own work session and hearing depending on the recommendation coming out of the, out of the planning commission. Next slides. Councillor, this next slide, I didn't really have much here to say. I just wanted to leave this for question, comment from council. What is your desire? That's, that concludes my, my overview of the surface mining and I will wait for questions and comments from council.
Thank you, Oliver. Councillor Medge.
Thank you, Oliver. Thank you very much for that really good presentation. I appreciate it. So I want to make a couple of comments and mix it in with some questions. So the first thing that struck me was two or three years. Oh my gosh. That's awful. And you know, when I first looked back at trying to find how we arrived at where we are today, I couldn't discover it. When I looked at the DNR resource maps, and I think they were from around 2012, looked at what came out of the task force, and then I actually listened to the final session with the council or the commission at the time. I, I couldn't find how they went from such a good DNR resource map to such limited surface overlay. There was really no explanation during the process of how the commission finally put the maps in place. They really necked down totally those areas that could provide good rock for construction in this county and elsewhere. So that was the first observation. And so leading off of that, you know, we have a rail dependent law that we hope to get to. You know, having rock on our short line is a good fit. Gets it off our rural roads to transfer locations elsewhere. It just is a good fit. So I don't know if this code 3.66 conflicts with that, but I'd certainly like to immediately address that local code section because it sounds like it really needs some reform. Additionally, you know, it's not my district anymore. It's the chairs, but you know, there's a huge conservation effort for timber harvesting mainly on warehouseer property up in the northeast area of the county. And I want to say it's like 30 or 40,000 acres of timber. And I understand that warehouseer right now is part of that process is trying to identify resource lands for other than timber so they can pull it out and not have it conserved for timber. So my question on that is, are you aware of what they're doing or finding? And are we able to incorporate what they identify? Wouldn't necessarily be a DNR map. This would be a private business trying to identify lands that may be appropriate for a quarry or other resource. The other comment and mixing with question, you know, we talked about airport overlays at one point, and I'm still completely dissatisfied with where we're at on that. And I hope to revisit that with you in the future. But our overlays don't give our neighborhoods, our residents enough notice. I hear that all the time. I have overflown most of the active quarries in the county. And what I see each and every time, because I'm looking at them and saying, hey, can this one expand? Can we get a bigger footprint? Can it go deeper or wider to provide more rock? And almost always I find homes located right next to them so that the quarry is just going to constantly be a source of irritation for those neighborhoods. So the overlays really aren't, I don't think they're very effective. We certainly see that at the Washougal pit, and I know that we don't need to go into that long history, but you have six neighborhoods right on the street that are directly impacted by, by a mine. And you know, a protective overlay should have protected that quarry and the rock that is crucial for our continued development. Let me see what else I have here. So those are my main points. I don't know if you want to comment on any of them, but I would like to get to 3.66 immediately and see if it conflicts with our right rail dependent overlay that we hope to develop more fully. I want to see how we could amend it to be more consistent with protecting our quarries. I want to revisit the overlays and what more we can do. And I understand that the process would, needs to be thorough. We need to engage the public and it'll take quite some time. But I'm also looking for what we can do in the short term to ensure a good outcome because most of us on this council won't be here in three years, most likely. And, and that's a problem with the two or three-year process. You know, you initiate something with a goal in mind, and then by the time you get through the process, there's other people, not only on your staff, but also on the council and all that work is lost. And I kind of suspect that may have happened back in 2014. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Medveigh. Greatly appreciated. Good points. Let me start with the timber. No, I'm not aware of what they are proposing, but you know, if, if you are, I will say. What they are proposing, but you know, if if you are, I will say uh. Put me in the loop so that I can be part of that uh monitoring what is that they're doing or what or any of my staff. So that's the easiest answer. The in terms of process, why did it take two to three years? I don't disagree with you, but you came back and said that in the process needs to be thorough. Which is really what it's all about and mining is very, very controversial, which I think the council have been. Uh made aware of. And that controversy gets really into the operational side of mining. Whether you're blasting, whether you are extracting and trucking and. Dust and top and all issue related to the operation side of the mining. So we don't have anyone on staff. Uh who is a geologist or who is an expert on mining. So you always have to rely on either industry representative or neighborhood folks. And you know, they keep on um discussing what area should. And then you ask yourself what. What information are they using to arrive at the decision that they're going to be arriving at? So that's why, you know, the last time took uh a long time. And as I mentioned in my brief uh overview. There were a lot of property owners, not a lot, but there were some. That didn't want the surface mining to be designated on their property in terms of the outcome. I recall uh that in the Livingston Mountain area. There was indeed aggregate resource uh which. We could have expanded the overlay, but the the neighborhood out there came unglued. Actually, they did file an appeal. And part of that appeal was, if I'm remembering or recalling uh that uh without making a mistake. Is that if the county commissioners at the time. Did not re- did not expand the surface mining in the Livingston Mountain, they will withdraw the appeal. So this was just kind of like give and take. Some uh property owners said no. Uh those in the Livingston Mountain area, because as you said, you know, they've been homes built out there and the conflict. So it was more of a compromise. The other thing is that I have no one on staff. You will agree that some are already criticizing the two thousand and five aggregate resource map, how accurate is it? And um there was, I wouldn't say that there was unanimous agreement on. Whether the overlay should apply to the 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 areas identified as. Clearly having aggregate resource designated on areas that are hypothetical or speculative. So you you see where this will be, folks will be having this agreement on, well. Let's look at areas that are identified where the aggregate resource is at. We don't send anyone to go test. To make sure whether there is really aggregate resource. When we do that is when there is an application. For removal of the urban uh of the resource overlay. That's when we ask the applicant to go test and we can also ask them to go and test. On those hypothetical and speculative areas to really come back with a study that says there is indeed. Aggregate resource on the property, so is 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 that type of analysis and review that makes it, you know, last for a long time? In terms of the policy three point six point six. Very good observation, it's up to the council if you like to change that policy or directors to delete it or change it or modify it. That will be your call, but I think part of that is to minimize the potential impact of. Uh homes out there or residential development out there and mining. And it is the county policy not to designate mining on rural lands where you know there are potential for homes. Now, if you want to take a look at that and say we need to change that uh the. As it relates to the rail freight rail, the council already made a decision. I believe unless you're going to expand that or change that in the future, not to designate. The freight rail of uh o- overlay on rural lands. We're only designating them so far on forest and ag. Because that's where you get some utility in terms of parcel size, if those parcel size. Twenty, forty or eighty makes more sense. When you get down to rural five, ten and twenty, you begin to run into some. What I may call legal lot of record that are less than five acres or less than what the zoning is. So we gotta wait where but uh issues before making a decision. Whether it should be applicable to rural uh residential rural. Uh land area in the unincorporated portion of the county, so that's will be my uh response to that. Now, in terms of the overlay, you and I have had a conversation about the airport and we can talk that offline and overlay in general. The i- in terms of the uh the overlay as is used in the uh growth field. But the the airport is both in terms of the. What I may call airport environment, it is in the county and also in the city. So the county has what we call airport environment overlay as well as the city. And there are some um requirements or code standards governing how we take a look at that. But you know, when when I discuss this with privately with you. What I came to it was that there was no permit. Or development that the county reviewed under that and approved. That is in violation of that airport environment or overlay and similarly for the city. Um in terms of the um. Surface mining overlay. Uh what I can say is that, again, whether we are reviewing a specific application. There's always issues, some is is the super determination adequate in some cases? Or uh did we provide adequate notice? Because we know that approving the overlay is a foot in the door for potential mining in the future. I always tell property owners that call me, I said. Placing an overlay doesn't really guarantee uh mining because. The property owner and the buyer will have to agree before um in some cases. Mining commence, but where um we don't know that, but that is my response. I think we can do better, in my opinion, in taking a hard look at our. Uh conditional use permit process if we can. And finally, um. Part of the issue again is how do we monitor? And implement the C U P hence is granted. And I think that's where some of the issues come into play. If we can take a look at the C U P and say, yeah, we need to update that or maybe. And I'm not gonna put this on the council, but this is something that may come up through com- community development. Is there, because we had that model in the past, and I'm just rambling here, pardon me, we have that model in the past. Where we have someone dedicated to mining and responding to that. That may be something that we may say we need a mining opman. Someone really an expert on mining so that they can respond to mining inquiry in terms of code enforcement and violation and monitoring. And implementation of our C U Ps has issued, so I will stop there, I hope I answered your question, sir.
Yes, thank you, Oliver, for all that detail and your your good thoughts. Uh and I do look forward to uh looking at this uh code of ours as well as talking to you offline. Uh once again about airport overlays.
Thank you, sir.
Are there other questions or comments?
Chair.
Councilman.
Uh yes, uh Oliver, thank you for this presentation and as we go forward, I'll probably have some more questions. But uh for right now, um I'm also a little concerned about the uh the age of the the aggregate resource map. I definitely understand uh uh human resources and the lack thereof uh but um. When, can you clarify at what point um? In any parts of the process, the determination is made that there is actual rock there as opposed to the hypothetical? Um if if say we are wanting to do a surface mining overlay expansion. And the aggregate map shows that it's hypothetical, uh at what point would that um? Tempest be tested?
Um we can, uh thank you councillor uh Temple Lance. We, let me start by saying that I have reached out to D N R. Uh uh because the two thousand and five, in the next three years, that will be twenty years. One all will agree that that's old. So I've reached out to D R D N R to ask timing of when the update will be completed. Or is there any, are they in the process of updating this map? Uh we do have some time, what I'm, what I mean by that is. The next periodic review is not due until June thirty twenty twenty five. So if we have new information, and I use the term new information from D N R. We can use that as the basis to update the current overlay map. But to come back to your question. Um if a known site, someone a property owner makes an application and is one of those side that is speculative. Or hypothetical, we will ask, staff will ask them to do a study to really identify that there is indeed aggregate resource on the map. Because this map hypothetical and speculative, no one really follows what it means. If you read it on the face, it is hypothetical. If you read it on it is speculative, so we will ask them to do a study. And sometimes an applicant would hire a geologist who will go out there and do some testing on the side and come back with a report that says, yes. There is indeed uh high quality uh aggregate resource on that map. And we use that as the basis to review the criteria and then make a recommendation one way or the others. That's what we've been doing and similarly, if uh when the rock is depleted, we just don't remove the overlay. We ask them to do the same thing, ensure that the aggregate resource have been depleted. By also doing a test to show that there is no more uh aggregate on the property. So that's the process we will follow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
And madam chair, the only thing I will add, sorry, is if I hear from D N R. I will share that through the county manager and let the councillors know that eh, this is the timing. Of when they will issue new information or no, they're not issuing new information, this is what they currently have.
Good, thank you very much, um. If there are no further comments or questions and I leave it open just for a second here to make sure. Okay, thank you, uh is somebody? Okay, I guess not. Um okay, thank you so much, Oliver, for this detailed presentation, it's helpful. And um that actually concludes, I believe, our work session for today then. And we are going to move into council time, however, I would like to take a ten minute break, please. So that will be um. Fifty four, yeah, nine fifty four, I'll see you back here, thank you.
Thank you, councillors.